I'm going to go ahead and call the committee of the hall to order. Mary Jo, can you please tell the role? Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Erin Varoski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Broden.
Here.
Matt Reinschek.
Here.
And first up, we have a presentation from Tom from Benke, but I'm going to turn it over first to the mayor.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. So Tom Zaropos is here from Benke, and he was partnered with Jack and Maria over at the Recreation Center to do a master plan for Memorial Park, which we've been talking about for quite some time. So we've had gone back and forth, and Tom's done excellent job on this along with Jack and his crew. So do you want to add anything, Jack, before he gets started?
No. All right.
So just one thing, we want to emphasize this obviously is just a draft. That's why it says "draft" up there, but we just wanted to make sure that that was emphasized. So he's going to walk through it, and then, of course, any questions, council's welcome to ask. So Zaropos, thanks so much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Nice to be here. I've been doing this for a while, and that doesn't mean I know everything about everything. So I'm very interested in getting feedback. One of the things I've learned over the years is the smartest thing I can do is be quiet and listen sometimes. So that's part of our here tonight. We've been working on this for a few months. Our objectives primarily are to reorganize, upgrade, replace, add activity venues, which in the future will best serve the Brooklyn -- our Brooklyn community. I want to quickly run through this. I'm sure you've been in the park, but very quickly acquaint you again with everything that's there. If you sort of follow the red stars around, the entry drive and the existing parking lot. So I'll go through this pretty quickly. If you want to stop me at any time, don't hesitate. That's the main drive through the park, which is 20 feet wide. It's past the gate, so that's primarily your service people and occasionally people that want to use the lower area of the park. The playground, which has been there since, I think, the '90s, had some upgrades. There's a pavilion there, a playground shelter, and that's getting a little bit ragged. The existing major pavilion and the splash pad, which has been abandoned for quite some time. The pool building, which is now park office and maintenance, and we'll talk about that a little more in the next -- in the Phase 1 discussion. Existing court areas, basketball, tennis, the old skate park, I guess, is over there as well. Existing restroom in the lower area of the park, the ball field in the lower area of the park with the big retaining wall, and of course, there's another ball field, number 15, to the right of that. And you're going to make some changes to that. That's already programmed, so I'm not going to talk about that this evening. The Old Stone Pavilion, which is really quite nice. Needs some -- a little bit of work, some roof work and some other things. And this pavilion, the South Creek Pavilion, and the bridge across to it. The lower area access drive, which is much narrower, that's only 10 feet wide, much more pedestrian in feel. And the South Nature Trail. Now, this is the master plan, and we've broken it down into three phases. I'm going to start with Phase 1 and start with the entry drive. I'm a big fan of the importance of first impressions. You have a new sign out there, and you can see what the drive looks like now. Eventually, that really ought to look more like a tree-lined, really beautiful access to a really beautiful park. And the library is going to help you do that because as part of their building program, they're going to upgrade their side of that driveway. Existing playground, we're proposing a new accessible play area and at least one new feature. The accessible play area will be where that existing pavilion is or that shelter. That's going to be removed, and that concrete pad will be reused as a base for a playground that is truly accessible and meets all the ADA requirements. Look at the new fence. The existing wood fence is okay, but one of the things you want is really good visibility in playgrounds so that parents and guardians can really see everything. So it'd be nice to have a fence that's easier to see through. A small community garden. You can see the star up next to the senior center. Now, here's one of the big deals. Parks have been in many communities. They have a big investment in these places, but the number of days a year they're used is relatively small. You know, we're in April, and there's probably not too many people in the park right now, although last week there probably were. This example is in the Jugga County Park. They built that four or five years ago. And it's essentially an all-weather pavilion. You can close it down and climate control it in the winter, and in the good days, you can open it up. This one's open at both ends of the facility. The one we're talking about would open up totally on both sides. It would have a porch on both sides. The porch on the playground side would be a place where parents and guardians can sit and monitor the whole playground area. The porch on the other side is another place where people could gather, sit, and view what we're going to call a great lawn, which I'll get to in a minute. I can tell you that this one, five years ago, cost Jugga Parks about $600,000. And everybody's going to ask what these things cost. So that's five years ago. They did not have a restroom. The one we're proposing would have a restroom. Restroom would be accessible from both inside and outside. So if you have to close the building, you can still have outside access to a restroom for somebody using the playground. I'm just talking about that pool building. It's currently used as for maintenance, and we were taking a look at how we might better utilize that building. The problem with it is one end of it has a deep reservoir that serves the splash pad. The other side of it has a lot of structural walls, which could be removed. The problem is the roof there wasn't designed to stand up without the walls. So you'd have a lot of major work to turn that building into a different use. And our experience is better and probably cost-effective to get one of these off-the-shelf, pre-designed, pre-engineered buildings that's designed for the use you want to use it for. That's not something you have to retrofit. Plus, the current location of that maintenance building isn't a very good location. It's right in the center of a major use area of the park. We'd rather get that off to the edge of the park. We can get a quarter-mile all-purpose trail in Phase 1, as you can see the red dash line, which is something people really seem to enjoy these days, and they also like knowing how many laps they have to do to get in there, required number of steps. So it's a relatively inexpensive way to activate that area of the park. Another really important part of this is what we're calling the Great Lawn. With that pavilion and the splash pad and the maintenance facility no longer there, you can create a space, a really unique space, that kind of resembles the Wade Oval Space. Probably most people are familiar with that, which is a highly programmable, very flexible space and used by lots of people or small groups of people for all kinds of activities. It would include new lighting. It would include sufficient infrastructure to do these activities, including power and lighting, as I said. Phase 2, that's essentially the west side of the upper area of the park, where there presently are four court areas: basketball, tennis, the Safety Town, and abandoned skate park. Our proposal is to remove two of those court areas, and what we'd have left is court areas for the size of two basketball and two tennis or volleyball or whatever else you wanted to do. Resurfaced, repaint striped, lighting upgraded. And the important element here is we relocate that entry drive and narrow it down to a more pedestrian scale. So it's no longer 10 feet wide, straight drive down the middle. Move it to the left or to the west in this case, and further expand what we refer to as the Great Lawn. One other element that we wanted to include in this is a program called Bank Shot, which probably should be in Phase 1, but was a late addition. So that would be where that red star is, where the current volleyball court is, which is not used very much. So those are the primary changes in Phase 2. Would also include some landscaping and planting. I think you've gotten some tree help from this county government, from their tree program. And on the western edge, there's some vegetation that needs to be removed and replaced and upgraded. Phase 3 in the lower area. I can't read that thing, so I got to go to my own notes here. There's an existing restroom down there, which is outdated, and that's going to be removed and replaced. The shelter needs a new roof. It's a very nice shelter, as I mentioned earlier. Re-roofed and some other minor repairs. One of the important issues down there is safety and security. So we're recommending that do some new lighting down there, particularly in the area of the pavilions and the restroom, along with some surveillance cameras, so that you can light that area up when you need to and, you know, make sure that it's safe and secure for anybody that's using it. We're also going to add a railing to that bridge. It's got a guard rail on it right now. And there's some minor drainage issues. The biggest change down there would be a new path around the ball field that up behind that retaining wall on that hillside. That would allow you to do a couple things. One, it's going to lengthen the area of trails for people to walk on. It's going to give you access to the area. It'll give you access -- give people, your neighbors, access to it. And that hillside area needs some vegetation management. So as part of putting that trail in, we clear up some of that at least 10 or 15 feet wide on either side of the trail so that it's easier to maintain and more secure. Those are the primary recommendations of the plan. There's some smaller issues, but those are the big ones. At the end of the handout I gave you, I gave you a larger copy of the master plan and a readable copy of the budget. I don't know how much detail you want to get into that right now. You can see what the Phase 1 and Phase 2 costs are. One way to reduce that a little bit is to combine this, do Phase 1 and Phase 2 together, which would probably save you 5% to 10% just in inflation at the rate it's going on and in terms of startup costs. One of the really unique things about your situation is that you have a really unique civic complex here with a new library, a new city hall, a rec center that you're thinking about upgrading, a neighboring school site that's going to have some significant upgrades. So not many communities have that kind of, you know, a large civic area. And upgrading Veterans Memorial Park is very timely because you are going to get the new library. You're going to get the new city hall. You're going to have some upgrades to the schools. So it sort of fits right in the whole picture. It's a unique opportunity for a unique facility to allow you to make -- to take full advantage of its potential. And that's a really quick run-through, but that's where we are.
Does anybody on council have questions? So do we have any sort of like timeframe?
So the budget for this year was for this. So this would be something that we would discuss, you know, going forward, you know, in the coming -- in this fall to talk about for doing some of this perhaps next year or 2025. But the budget for this year was for 2025, for this year was to do this master plan. So we're just, you know, we just got this, the numbers last week, I think.
Yeah.
And so we can start game planning exactly after we have conversations with council to finalize this, and then to put together a plan for how we want to move forward, whether we want to do it just Phase 1, do Phase 1 and 2 together, or how we want to do that, so.
And when is the library supposed to be finished?
The library is supposed to be finished this summer of next year, so.
A little bit earlier.
Yep. As long as they can get in there on time, in here on time.
Actually, with the library being done next year and everything, I'd be in favor of trying to get phase 1, which we don't get together. That way, it's like otherwise we're driving around and.
Yeah, that's going to be up to council to have the final, you know, final say that.
First of all.
Yep. And just as note, I know I mentioned it in my email, but in case you didn't see it, so Safety Town obviously is not on here. I've already talked to Dr. Claris, and he's in favor of it. The police are in favor of moving that actually over to the school property. And the potential site would be right next to where the current playground is over there, and so they're all in favor of hosting it. Would actually be able to be used a lot more than it is now since that's where the students are, you know, for the most part. So, you know, it may be out for, you know, the season when we're moving it. We don't really know the timing of it, but it would be utilized at the school property.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? I know you're not Dr. Claris, but did he -- was your impression that he was giving it a permanent home? Because this is the first time it's ever had a permanent home. We used to literally drag the houses out and throw them on a playground.
No, 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 no. The -- he actually --
Parking lot.
Yeah, that's a fair point. No, he actually mentioned, he goes, well, so basically all we need is a cement pad and fencing, you know, which so, which is accurate.
Gave you, yeah.
Right, gave me the impression that of a more -- Yeah, that's what my indication was, that we want to move it there permanently. And right next to that playground, there's, I mean, three times the amount of space that we have here. Yeah, you're out there every day, right? But so, so, yeah.
But like I said, it's never had a -- this is the first permanent home it's ever had.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, those buildings aren't really meant to be moved in and out. The plan was to give them those buildings, obviously. And, yeah, I don't see a way it wouldn't be discussed.
Yeah, I would hate to lose that. I would hate to lose the permanency of it after we got it. Sue, I think, remind me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but the Dr. Claris is coming to the next council meeting?
Correct.
This would be a good question to ask.
Well, I could follow up with him to double-check before then as well. But I mean, that, I didn't -- it never came up. So I would assume that it would be permanent. That's kind of how the way we were talking, so. But I can double-check for sure.
Yeah.
Just to clarify on the permanence, it's, I mean, I understand the schools are going to house it there, but it's that they don't have to be moved in and out and that it doesn't have to be like, you know, repainted all the time and all that, which used to be done by volunteers. First of all, this is very exciting and near and dear to my heart because I was on the original Memorial Park redevelopment committee in the late '90s, and so was Sue. Just a couple of quick questions, and I realize that this is a draft. Pardon me? I know. The community garden, how many plots is there going to be room for?
So that's kind of up for debate now. So we've kind of placed it by the senior center, which is kind of the reason, the area we're going to put it there. So we have some built-in volunteers there. I know Erin, Councilman Varoski's had some interest from some community members about doing it. The initial thought was to start small. I think maybe 10 to 12 plots somewhere in there, depending on the size of them. We could always expand it, but the -- that was kind of like the initial talk was around that number. Get the built-in volunteers, get the program up and running. You could always expand that. That's an easy one to expand. We're not looking at anything massive like if you've seen, I think it's --
The spring one?
I'm sorry. Yes, nothing like that degree, you know, something. Our goal, too, was to get the seniors involved. We have a garden club, so those are probably the main group of volunteers doing that, and whatever other community members, but small, smaller nature.
So that was going to be my other question, is it, when you mentioned volunteers, community garden now means something different than it did when we originally did the park, where people sign up for the plots? That's what you're envisioning?
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways you can do it. We had one in Brexville when I was there, and that was essentially that they would, you know, purchase the plot. They would decide what to put in there.
Right.
And, you know, and that was a similar set of things.
But when you say volunteers, like kind of thinking for ones that aren't, might not be taken, or?
Well, you did, overall, we'd have volunteers monitoring the park on the general level. And that's why we put it right by the senior center.
Yeah.
They can be out there, make sure, I mean, if someone's plot, someone's plot is failing.
Right.
You know, we can notify that person or just keep it up ourselves.
And I think you already know, we had a community garden that was small and, you know, had playgrounds. And one of the issue, well, two of the issues were, over time, getting enough volunteers and then the water source. That was a big thing.
Yeah, we haven't even scratched the surface about design, how we're going to get that stuff out there. We really just kind of discussed placement, so, yeah.
Okay.
That's something we consider.
And you definitely, you already noticed, but you definitely have to have standards, and somebody has to be monitoring.
Absolutely. And that's kind of why we put it kind of in locale by the senior center, that there's, we'll have staff there, and then we'll be kind of built-in people there to monitor that.
I like the, like enclosed pavilion. It's also, looks like maybe a little bit similar to Lakewood but on a smaller scale. A little bit similar to the women's pavilion at Lakewood, but maybe on a smaller scale?
I'm not sure. What the comparison is. The roofed area would be close to what's under your big pavilion now, the area under roof.
Could you go back to, you mentioned the, I think you said, a quarter-mile pathway. Is that all on the upper? Because right now, our path starts pretty much like right when you get past the senior center, the roadway, and then you can go down.
Yeah, the quarter-mile, that one would all be on the upper.
Okay.
It would all be ADA, you know, accessible. It's pretty flat up there, anyway. In fact, the whole park's pretty relatively accessible.
And what did you mention about the road, the current roadway now coming in to the actual park area?
Well, in Phase 2, what we wanted to do, whoops, is move it over and narrow it.
Okay.
Make the whole place feel pedestrian, not vehicular.
But our vehicles would still be able?
Your people, yes. And people you allow to go to the lower area that have something going on, yeah. Because it would be the same size as the road in the lower area. That is much narrower.
And then just a couple more quick questions. As far as the lower park goes, you know, security's very important. And one thing we did have down there, but at some point we just couldn't maintain it anymore, was that panic button, like with the blue light. I'd like to see if we could get something, you know what I'm talking about, Jack, something back in there in addition to the cameras and upgraded lighting. Because it is a pretty isolated area, and I think it's important to put something like that back in. And the elevation by M2, that's not going to change, like the retaining, that's all going to stay?
No, so that's kind of the goal was to, the retaining wall was staying. Stay, we clean up the vegetation however we do that. And the thought was to put a path connecting from like right now, you know, the new path going down by M2, it just dead-ends.
Correct.
In Rodeon there.
Right.
So the plan would be to continue that path up the hillside, so that way the people from the apartments, if we get permission from St. Elias, we could tie right into that parking lot right there.
Okay.
And that would actually connect everything. It'll be all together then. So we clean up that hillside, the hillside would stay.
Okay.
And then we would just kind of have a path going up and around the hill.
And one last question. Can you go back to where it shows the lower park with, yeah. So M1 is still on top, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure. It's hard to tell with that. Thank you.
And that is getting renovated this year. It's part of our capital planning.
Yep. Thank you.
One thing I might add, in a perfect world, which it never is, but you're going to have that library construction going on for probably 18 months. And it's not in the park, but you're going to feel like you're in a construction zone, you know how that is. So it'd be nice if you were going to do this, if you did it at the same time, so you don't have one end and another construction project start, and then you still feel like you're in a construction zone for another year. So I'd just say, in a perfect world, that'd be the nice way to do it.
Anybody else on council? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor to introduce our next speaker.
All right, so as council is well aware, we had a survey, recreational survey that was done last year, and Mark Leiburger and Brian Naim have been working on the data for that. So, gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. They sent the executive summary to administration last week. I sent that to council. You have a chance to review that this week, this weekend. And so they're here to walk through those survey results. So, Mark, thanks so much for being here. I appreciate it.
I can speak loud enough? Can you hear me in the back?
There's, that microphone is active if you go over there.
When we look at the initial study, when we got together, one of the intents of the initial study was really to conduct the market analysis so we could say, what is the consumer opinion as it relates to potential development within the given community? And when we began to look at the study and we started to talk about construction of the study, a couple of the key concerns were public awareness, identification of potential priorities. We talked about the needs of the residents within the community, and then preferences that align with recreational services that may be in line with the offerings within the given community now and as well as in the future. So what we did, we created a survey. And the survey actually consisted of 10 questions with multiple examples. And then within each question, there were multiple items that consumers were asked to rank. And based upon the responses that were turned to us, either online or in the mail, we looked at the data analysis. We did have a few surveys that were returned that were incomplete, which always happens in a study of this size. But we actually did the distribution online, as well as mailed the surveys to every consumer household within the community. When we received those responses back, we entered the data, and basically, we ended up with about 1,361 surveys that were specific to the residents and non-residents within the given community, okay? And when we talk about this, we begin to look at overall issues. And one of the things that we did in terms of moving forward was look at the resident population in comparison to the non-resident population. And we started to look at not only the resident and non-resident responses, but we looked at themes, we looked at priorities that were aligned with those given responses over a period of time. So the first question basically asked how many members of the household had visited the Brooklyn Recreation Facility in the last 12 months. One of the surprising things that came back from the survey in this is the out-of-town residents actually exceeded the in-town residents in terms of overall response. Now, I would say this is not necessarily alarming, but it does beg and brings to question, you know, some of the rationale as to why, which we'll talk about as we get into the survey a little bit further. But when we begin to talk about overall frequency, the majority of the residents with, you know, 75% had used the facility. We will, in the next question, start to look at how frequently they used that facility. And then when we look at non-residents, that frequency was closer to 86, almost 87% in this given regard, okay? The second question started to get into volume. And when we talk about how often members of the household visited the rec center, you know, we talked about about a third of the residents used it on a very often or higher basis to where when we talk about the non-residents, that was approximately 50%. And then it the non-residents, that was approximately fifty percent, and then it tapered down in the other categories. But when we look at the non-residents, we actually still had about forty percent of the residents that rarely or never used the facility, which I think describes a couple different things, especially in terms of potential use and potential opportunities, when you begin to look at the magnitude of the study. One of the first questions we asked in terms of overall facility items was ranking of programs in terms of priority as a household, of recreation programs. To no surprise, from, from our perspective of what we had heard prior to, we found that the aquatic programs were actually rated the highest from community residents. And we found that non-residents looked at recreation programs, which is in line with a lot of the other responses that were given throughout the survey as we continued. Couple things, when we talked about, when we talked about, you know, the youth and the adult recreation programs, these trends were evident, that those programs had, were desired within the community, but I think one of the things that we look at when we started to assess the information was, you know, the differential here begins to be significant between what we saw with the aquatic programs versus the summer enrichment programs over a particular period of time. When we were asked in terms of the facilities, the residents, again, identified the pool, and the indoor pool is the highest ranking priority, and then, that was followed by the outdoor pool, and then preference for the ice rink. In terms of non-residents, it was overwhelming that the ice rink was identified first, the indoor pool was second, and the outdoor pool was third. You know, we started to see some variance in the latter responses, and this makes sense in terms of the community exercise room, that may align with the, the non-residents in terms of use, in terms of plausibility on the visit, but we did see a little bit broader demand specific to the weight room or cardio types of fitness and exercise equipment, and we saw this theme come up later on in the survey as well, in terms of overall recreational priorities. When we talk about recreational sports, when we begin to look, you know, in terms of residents, baseball was identified as number one, followed very closely by ice hockey, soccer, figure skating, volleyball. We saw that basketball was last in this community. Now, that's not normally what we see in terms of other communities, and that's distinct from what we've seen in a lot of the other assessments that we've done throughout northeast Ohio, but it was identified last in terms of non-residents and residents. The residents preferred the ice hockey and the figure skating as number one and number two, and it was pretty distinct that that was the most favorable alternative in terms of recreational sports in this given instance. When we talked about recreational services, in terms of program and activities offered, that was of the highest priority in terms of residents, as well as non-residents. We saw that registration was the lowest level priority in terms of recreational services. And, this isn't necessarily aligned with some of the other communities. When we look at development, and we look at some of the alternatives in terms of offering and ease of registrations, a higher level priority, but when we begin to look at the maintenance and the maintenance component, it aligns throughout, even when we get into the thematic items of the survey, it aligns that those types of priorities are evident, both within the community and the non-residents that are using the facilities within the community. Renovation concepts that were identified, and potentially identified as a priority from non-residents included the walking track, the potential use of a fitness center, or, you know, that involved the weight and the cardio that we mentioned earlier, and then updating the ice sheet and the ice rink in that given capacity. When we talk about non-residents, the definitive priority, again, was relative to updating the ice rink, and then the lounge and the gatherings, places that were aligned. We did find the e-gaming demand from the surveys to be low, but that doesn't necessarily, you know, in this instance, I don't think it, it's been a significant item within the community. I know we're seeing growing trends and user trends across the country, and in schools right now, so this is something that I would recommend that you keep an eye on in the future in terms of engagement types of opportunities. When we talk about the pool renovations, you know, one of the priorities that was identified by the residents was the large outdoor pool space, in terms of what could be done, in terms of access, in terms of capacity. The zero-depth entry for the pool was another priority that had a high level of response. We started to see a little bit of distinction between those first two responses, and then the third and the fourth response, and then even more distinction from those first two and the fifth through the, the ninth response to this particular question. But when we begin to look at pool renovations and criteria, I think the space component was the alternative that was identified as the highest. From the non-residents, it was just a reverse order in terms of zero depth, and then the large pool space in terms of alternatives and options. We did not necessarily ask non-residents how often, bless you, how often they were utilizing that facility. When we looked at overall option scenarios we provided within the survey, option one denoted that there would be renovations done to the ice facilities, as well as the swimming pool. Option two denoted that there would only be ice rink renovations. Option three identified that there would only be pool renovations. And then, option four basically just said, maintain the maintenance schedule that you've already allocated within the community, no renovations were needed. When we looked at consumer responses of the, of the residents, as you can see, we talked about almost seventy percent of the residents chose option one for their first or second choice collectively. When we begin to talk about, you know, residents in terms of option four, you can see the L O I here in terms of overall preference, it was their last choice in terms of overall identity and priority, which begins to tell me that the consumers within the community, the residents within the community, actually would like to see, you know, something moving forward, dependent upon what that is, and the nature and the circumstances, but they are in favor of, you know, I think renovations of those current facilities. When we talked about non-residents, we talked about the overall options, there was a lot more parity in terms of overall responses, and you begin to look at the response preferences, you know, option four, which is just leave things and leave the ice rink as is, was actually their number one choice. It was followed fairly closely by option one, and then option two in terms of overall scenarios of that given equation.
And, next question was, we asked the respondents to write their most important aspect, I think, because the previous questions were, like, we asked them to rate, to rank the options that are given, but this ones were, like, the respondents actually wrote those aspects that they think it was important. So, the residents, the most important aspect of the Brooklyn Recreation Center was the swimming pool, and then, then the ice program, and then the ice rink. Those were the three themes emerged. And then, non-residents, they said, ice program, like, two hundred and twelve, and ice rink, those were the two themes emerged that they thought it's the most important aspect. And then, the second most important aspect for the residents was a swimming pool, and then, fitness center. Those were the two, two themes that the residents thought was, they were really important. And non-residents, second most important aspect was still the ice program and then the ice rink. And then, the third most important aspect of the Brooklyn Recreation Department for the residents was a fitness center, and then swimming pool, and some youth programs. So, the non-res, the residents' responses were more likely very diverse. And then, the non-residents', third most important aspect of the Brooklyn REC Department was still the ice program and the ice rink. So, now, we merged all three answers together, and as we can see here on the, like, sixteen, page sixteen, the table, for the residents, the answers that the most important aspect of the REC Center was very diverse, it was swimming pool, ice program, ice rink, also fitness center, rec program, and youth programs, I mean, it was very diverse answers. For the resident, non-residents, again, like, it was ice program and ice rink, and some swimming pool, outdoor and indoors, so it was very obvious that the residents, like, the needs was more very diverse, whereas the non-residents' needs were were very focused on the ice rink and then the ice program. And next, it was kind of open-ended question, we asked the respondents to give us some feedback about their suggestions for the rec program here in Brooklyn, and then, five themes emerged, actually. So, theme one was keep the ice rink. And then, theme two was renovate the pool. Theme three was strengthen the recreation program. Theme four was update the facility. Theme five was need more rooms, such as community rooms, exercise rooms, et cetera. And, here in the table, on page sixteen, seventeen, you can see that the residents recommended keep the ice rink and renovate the pool, not, almost, still, not evenly, but it was close, theme one and number, theme two. But, the non-residents', their recommendation was mostly keep the ice rink. Like, out of two hundred, like, comments, one fifty mentioned that we want to keep the ice rink.
When we talk about the critical factors as we did the assessment of the survey, a couple of things that came out were, you know, one of the things that we found was the priority of residents, preference to the aquatic programs throughout the survey and the survey responses, both youth and adult programs that were prevalent. Some of the other research that wasn't conducted in the survey also looked at market factors within the region and within the area, and we did found that, you know, when we talk about sports and youth participation, community participation within the city of Brooklyn was a little bit lower than some of the national standards, but not that much lower. But the proximal location, when we begin to talk about travel and engagement opportunities, was deemed to be very advantageous to the city of Brooklyn in that given process. When we look at, you know, some of the other components, and we talk about the, the non-resident frequency of visitation, as I mentioned earlier, it, it also is one of those components that we saw steadily, and with some of the comments throughout, that the integration in conceptually identifying the programs that link with resident demands will be very advantageous to the renovation process and the conceptualization process if you begin to move forward in that, that given route. And then, we have a couple more slides to go through, some other factors when we talk about, you know, in terms of the facilities, when we begin to look at the indoor pool versus the outdoor pool and the ice rink, we begin to see a little bit of separation in terms of residents between the indoor pool and the outdoor pool, and a little bit of separation between the outdoor pool and the ice rink. But overwhelmingly, these three characteristics repeated themselves in terms of demand and in terms of interest of the respondents throughout the survey. In terms of services, when we begin to talk about programming and priorities, I think, again, we go back to the programming and link to maintenance. Now, there was a lot of individuals that commented on the maintenance components and the program offering component, but very advantageous where it stands. Again, I think they would like to see the broader linkage with future development of the given facilities. And then, relative to importance, you know, to me, when you begin to look at the importance item and the weighted items, when we talk about the relative importance and the identification, the non-residents definitively identified the ice rink and ice-related activities as the primary response. When we begin to look at the study itself, and what we have engaged in, you know, the purpose of the study wasn't to come out and provide a bunch of recommendations for the community, the purpose of the study was to identify what the consumer priorities were of the residents and of the non-residents as part of that assessment process. So when we begin to talk about overall assessment, one of the things that I think continued to go and come out throughout the assessment process is that the ice rink's almost a staple of the community, there's identity with that. Now, not to say that modifications potentially couldn't be made, or alterations couldn't be done in the future, or integration couldn't be utilized as a strategy in terms of the future, but the overall preference to the ice rink and the swimming areas was definitive throughout the survey, and consistent with the overall consumer responses throughout. Couple of the things that we, we did identify when we talk about the access to walking track, which I think most of you in here may also recognize is also complementary to those types of processes, was advantageous, and then we saw that the fitness components, how they could potentially be included or offered was also under consideration. Next one, Ryan? Overall, when we talked about non-residents and versus residents, when we begin to look at, you know, what you could do in the future, one of my recommendations, I think, that we would have is to potentially try to implement some focus groups, to get a broader definitive response and a more in-depth response to the amenities, the nature, the circumstances that may align with these given priorities, and I think that would be advantageous to move forward when we begin to talk about identification and alternatives, and how the city may want to move forward with the priorities that are given. Okay? Any comments, questions?
Anybody on council have questions?
First of all, just a comment, I'm not surprised that we saw so many non-residents who responded, and to us, it's not surprising that their focus is the ice rink.
Right.
Because that's who's gonna, as a non-resident, those are the people who are gonna fill that out. I think maybe one reason basketball is low is because we don't have the facilities for that in our community.
And I would agree with that assessment.
Okay. And, you know, for years, we've struggled with our low resident use, and also, the whole indoor walking and cardio, and I think one of the reasons why that is in higher is because of the limited space we have right now. And we only have that space because one of our residents passed away and left us his house, and that was the use for cardio, so we were able to convert, you know, our racquetball space for that, but... space for that, but...
One of the considerations that Jack and I did speak about after the survey was completed is you have a lot of non-resident users, and one of the things that potentially may need to be explored further is how can you get those non-resident users to expand more with why they're in the community? And potential offerings, whether it's, you know, links to other alternatives, other choices, but to get and extend that stay over a given period of time. You know, I give the example that you would use for a Guardians game, you go up to the game, but then they have a variety of amenities that they try to engage you in to be supplemental to that particular offering, and I could see that potentially being extremely advantageous to the community over a significant period of time.
And one of our challenges also is, and I realize this is just a starting point, but, you know, if we're going to keep the ice rink, and I agree with you, like, even longtime residents who haven't been to the ice rink in years, to them, it's part of our identity. We were one of the first to have it, and people are very attached, I think, to the idea of it, but, you know, we don't have the space to accommodate everything we want to do right now without, you know, considering building on if we're going to keep the ice rink. And Jack, are we still considering the splash pad as part of...
Yeah, all bets on the table, everything with the pool renovations and such.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to talk about, or Jack will talk about, the potential for switching, you know, a few minutes we have left for switching over, or, excuse me, reorganizing the senior center, the recreation center. All right, so I'll pass this out to council as well.
So, I guess, looking forward to the future here with, you know, we've looked at the membership numbers of the senior center and the recreation center, and, you know, we, I guess, as a department, you know, feel that it would be advantageous to kind of combine efforts, I guess, for lack of a better term. So, moving forward, in efforts to fill Kathy's vacated position, we would like to essentially create two new positions, both titled Recreation Coordinator, and those would be ask-me bargaining positions, and one of, one of those two coordinators would be essentially doing Rachel's job currently, responsible for the scheduling of the ice rink among, you know, among other duties over on that side, and the other person would essentially step into Kathy's old role at the senior center and assume some programming duties and facility operations. So, the goal really here is to kind of move on from the secretary model, which, you know, we really, I think we need to kind of be a little more forward-thinking on this, you know, recreation coordinator, we can get somebody in there who has some experience in programming facility operations, senior operations potentially, and we can use them just for a broader variety of things to do with in our department moving forward. So, that's the goal in general, so we would essentially be, you know, creating two new positions under the union, however, not really encumbering anymore money budget-wise, we're just kind of filling two positions, restructuring the titles, and moving forward from there. So, and then, if you want to look into the work chart a little more in detail, you can kind of see how that kind of flows into the rest of the proposals that we have there with, you know, potentially in the future, hiring some senior center clerks and things like that. So, it's really kind of a forward-thinking process we're trying to use here. You know, the senior center isn't highly attended, now we're tasked with improving that, obviously, but I think just, you know, really kind of putting that under the recreation umbrella and moving forward, kind of as we already have with Rachel and Maria being over there, and really expanding on the program, expanding on facility usage, you know, upgrading that facility as with our facilities. So, we're kind of looking at this as a true departmental change to just try and get more residents active, not just seniors, not just our rec members, but kind of as a, just a future thinking move here, so.
Question from council?
So, I mean, really, you know, Kathy, you know, we didn't know if this is going to be temporary or permanent, but we really, you know, when Karen left, we did not replace her, and then Kathy, we provided her, you know, I don't know if you want to call it a stipend or whatever for doing both jobs. So, under, I see where you have, like, head cashier, front desk, like, is, that's under consideration for the senior center?
No, those are, those are part-time, the head cashier we currently have.
No, I know that they're the rec center, but you mentioned something about...
Well, clerks, possibly clerks at the, at the senior center down the line if we, you know, if we needed them.
Okay.
There's not, that's not being proposed right now.
Right, but you mentioned it, so that's why I wanted to...
Part-time clerks, I mean, front desk staff, not full-time, yeah, correct.
Okay. And are we, might not be discussing this publicly yet, but do we, if you can't, just let me know, pay range in mind?
There, I don't know.
Not yet.
Okay, we can always...
Yeah, exactly.
Do an executive session to get that in.
Correct, yeah, but we have, we have had those discussions, I think we're pretty close to something, but we can have an executive session to talk about the...
Okay. And do you envision that one person over there is going to be enough to keep track and do everything?
With the assistance of our department, and that's, that's kind of the goal here, so this would be, yes, I think one full-time person with the assistance of the volunteers, our maintenance staff, service department maintenance staff, and Maria, Rachel, and myself, again, looking at as one department, we kind of help each other out now as it is anyways.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay. And one last thing, which is not exactly related to this, but how are we handling the cleaning and the maintenance and everything right now?
Currently?
Since Ed retired.
So, we are filling the opening of the building, the general maintenance duties is, is a combination of the rec department full-time maintenance staff and service department full-time maintenance staff. So, three days a week, it's actually falling on rec, two days a week, it's actually falling on service. And for the time being, that's what we're using, but, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, so.
And is that working?
It is, it's not a permanent solution, I mean, you know, both departments are pulled in quite a few different directions, it's not a permanent solution, we'd like to consider some things down the road, but it's working for the time being.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know how many, we don't have a lot of time left, how many people have been able to go over the rec center since Jack and his team have taken over over there, but I've been over there several times.
To the senior center?
Or did I say rec center? He's been over the rec center, over the senior center, and they've done an outstanding job of opening up space, just making this space that's there more usable, they're adding some large screen TVs in there for different programming that already exists and then also to expand it. I was stopped over the other day for the, the senior center had a dance over there, and their whole team was over here, you know, with that, they had a pretty good turnout for that. So, I want to comment, compliment Jack and Maria and his team, they've done an excellent job in this transition, and we've been discussing this for a while, I'm very excited about this, if council were to choose to accept this position, this new position in the city, I think, I think it's really going to help not just benefit the senior center, but also the rec center as well, in kind of merging those two together, because it really, they really are, they really should be together, and trying to expand who uses the community center, the senior center, and also who uses the rec center. So, I think this is a great first step in that direction, which kind of dovetails into what Mark was just talking about from Kent State, try to expand the usage of those facilities, and I think this is a good step forward for that, so.
Anybody else in council? Thanks, Jack. Are we going to do it gender or Jason?
We'll save it for council, sorry.
Okay. So, for committee of the whole, we have under new business today, Resolution 2023-13, is on first reading, but looking to adopt through suspension of the rules tonight. This is amending Resolution 2023-12, the guaranteed maximum price for the city center project, which Jason will be talking to us about at the city council meeting, but we did get the budget tracker for this. Does anyone in council have comments, questions? Make a recommendation that we adopt by suspension tonight?
Before we have a chance to ask questions, or...
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think we're out of time.
And then, we have Order 2023-10, which is also on first reading, what Jack just talked to us about, which is establishing the position of the Recreation Coordinator. Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Did we have... Oh, we didn't have...
Sorry, great. Wrong meaning.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second to adjourn.
I could not even hear that. Sorry, the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Who made it? You, thank you.
I did the, I did the second.
Thank you. Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Sullards?
Yes.
Kathy Koochey?
Yes.
Karen Baraski?
Yes.
Kevin Jansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yes.